Rock and roll on this work session? Yes. Are we broadcasting to the extent we need to be? Wonderful. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 work session of the McMinnville City Council. I will turn the floor over to Jeff Hunsaker, our Public Works Director, to introduce the topic. Is that correct? I wasn't referencing, I just assumed with what we were talking about that you were. I would like to call on Heather Richards, our Community Development Director, to introduce the topic. Thank you.
And actually, Mayor, we wanted to request that we change the agenda in terms of the timing of the two work sessions because we have guests presenting for the transitional housing and they're online now. So if we could start with that work session first, that'd be great.
Absolutely.
And then I'd be happy to lead the.
Please. Thank you. Floor is yours.
All right, just one moment, just gonna share my screen here. My name is Evan Hipps and I'm the City's Associate Housing Planner. Tonight, the City Council is having a work session on transitional housing. Purpose of the work session is to discuss the proposed municipal code amendments that would support the development of transitional housing in McMinnville. Because this is a new land use being contemplated, staff felt that this meeting would be a good opportunity to seek guidance from the City Council on the draft code amendments. During tonight's work session, I'll provide an opening presentation covering an introduction to transitional housing and some background information on the work that has been done so far. This will include an explanation of what transitional housing is and why it's become an important part of the housing spectrum. I'll also provide a summary of the Affordable Housing Committee and Planning Commission discussions on the proposed code amendments so far. And then after this summary, I will hand it over to our guests from Rogue Retreat, who have prepared a presentation for you all covering their work in Southern Oregon. Presentation is intended to provide insight into the operations and management of transitional housing developments and get a better sense of the populations that transitional housing is intended to serve. And Rogue Retreat's staff will also be available to take some questions that the City Council may have. And then following that guest presentation, I will then provide a summary of the proposed code amendments for transitional housing within McMinnville. With it being the first time I'm presenting to City Council, just wanted to take a moment to share a little bit about myself and my background. The past few years, I was working for the city of Edford in Washington, located in the middle of the Tacoma-Seattle metro area with a population around 15,000 people. Over those five years, I worked my way from a planning technician to an associate planner and eventually to a senior planner. And during my time there, I had some filling responsibilities, including the Planning Commission Staff Liaison. I developed the city's first internship program, which consisted of five local high school students that participated in citywide activities for six weeks in the summer. Also led the public participation processes for a town center subarea plan that was going on and the city's comprehensive plan update. And then lastly, I was a project manager for the city's missing middle housing suitability and racially disparate impacts and displacement analysis, which is where I really grew to have an interest in working on housing-related issues. And I began for, working for the city of McMinnville in the last week of February. And I'm excited for the opportunity to focus on housing-related projects and work alongside the Affordable Housing Committee to develop new strategies to help provide more housing for the community. And then on a quick personal note, I'm originally from Wisconsin and I enjoy cheering on the Green Bay Packers and other Wisconsin sports teams. Growing up, I was always playing sports and trying to keep up with my two older brothers. And in my senior year of high school, I was the captain of my wrestling team and we won our school's first state championship. And then in my free time, my wife Lindsay and I enjoy spending our free time traveling, exploring new restaurants, going to concerts and enjoying the outdoors with our golden retriever, Olive. So just wanted to share a little bit about myself before I dive into business. All right, now back into business. I wanted to make sure we acknowledge the relevant goals and objectives from the MAC Town 2032 Strategic Plan. The housing opportunities goal to create diverse housing opportunities that support great neighborhoods across the income spectrum. And then the two objectives to collaborate to improve the financial feasibility of diverse housing development opportunities and to conduct thorough and timely planning and forecasting to ensure that regulatory frameworks and land supply align with market-driven housing needs. And then the second goal here for growth, growth and development character, to conduct thorough and timely planning and forecasting. Sorry, forecasting to ensure that regulatory frameworks and land supply align with market-driven housing needs. And the objectives to define the unique character through a community process that articulates our core principles and strategically plan for short and long-term development that will create enduring value for the community. And.
So his computer just went into an automatic update.
No warning.
Sorry about that. It usually happens during Planning Commission meetings, so we've made that request.
It's nice that there wasn't a loud sound and bars of red, blue and green across the screen while this happened.
All right. You make sure to check for those updates next time, I guess. All right. Moving into some background information on transitional housing. So I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the gap that transitional housing is meant to bridge or close. Transitional housing is meant to provide people with security and stability along with access to health and social services as they build a path towards stable housing. Transitional housing projects can offer a cost-effective means for providing an intermediate shelter option while preserving individual autonomy, privacy and responsibility. And then just want to make note of where transitional falls, transitional housing falls in the diagram shown on the left in the housing spectrum. It's really not intended to support individuals who are experiencing chronic houselessness. It's really for individuals who are transitioning into a permanent, stable housing situation but may need a little extra support or time in order to do so successfully and sustainably. This is not intended to say that other services at different levels of the housing spectrum are not needed. However, additional discussion on those services may take place in the future. But at this work session with these proposed code amendments, the focus is only on transitional housing development. So at the beginning of the year, the Affordable Housing Committee reviewed their action plan and voted on the priority issues that they wanted to focus on and transitional housing came out as the clear priority. The purpose of the policy discussions had two goals in mind. One, to develop a clear permitting procedure for applicants proposing transitional housing. And additionally, to provide relief for transitional housing development to lower barriers and allow more flexible building models. This relief focuses on development and design standards for things like building design and landscaping requirements. Factors that have contributed to the need for transitional housing include housing shortage, so not enough homes being built and not enough developable land to build on. Affordability, wages not keeping up with increased rents and home sale prices. Nonprofit and government program capacity. Many people who qualify for assistance cannot receive it. Houselessness for a variety of other reasons such as healthcare costs, unemployment, disability or injury, domestic violence and family conflict and others. So this diagram is intended to show the relationship between houselessness and affordable and stable housing. The arrows are pointed in both directions because it's common for individuals to move between these two circles depending on countless factors. Many people can easily find themselves bouncing between these two scenarios. Some of the common vulnerabilities that people are experiencing include individuals with disabilities or physical injuries that limit their ability to find accessible housing. Victims and children and households fleeing domestic violence. Young adults who age out of foster care. People experiencing job instability or unemployment for many reasons. Or health and medical concerns such as mental health problems and substance abuse. These populations are vulnerable to fall between the cracks of traditional housing opportunities, which ends with these people needing to find another way to seek shelter. When struggling to find housing, there are many obstacles that can limit someone's ability to overcome houselessness, including again, the lack of available and affordable housing, a lack of social services and case management, job instability, financial literacy and budgeting. Like for an example, going from maybe zero dollars that you're paying for rent, jumping up to somewhere like $1,200 a month can be a pretty significant change to kind of manage and budget for. And then transition, transportation costs and maintenance. So your car breaks down and you need it to get to work and kind of the domino effect that can take place there. So now we've come to the importance of transitional housing. Between the transition from houselessness to stable housing, there's a key process that helps vulnerable populations overcome the most common obstacles. And transitional housing is a key component to the housing spectrum and provides a place for people who are both working their way into stable housing or it may be a safety net for those who have fallen out of stable housing. But it can help prevent them from needing to sleep on the streets or in emergency shelters. And so now, as you'll hear more from Rogue Retreat, transitional housing is intended to provide people with security and stability along with access to health and social services as they build a path towards stable housing. And then just real briefly, before we hand it over to Sam, moving from the general introduction of transitional housing into the specific efforts being made in McMinnville, the Affordable Housing Committee held three focused discussions this year. In March, staff prepared an introductory presentation with some examples of some different projects and regulations from a few different cities. In April, they began to develop a code structure based on comparisons from those other cities. And to help develop the structure, staff worked from the city's standards for a single-room occupancy or SRO developments. And then in May, the AHC provided some final recommendations that helped us get to a first draft of proposed code amendments. And then finally, in July, the Affordable Housing Committee and Planning Commission helped a joint work session to effectively transfer the code amendment work onto the next stage of the process. And more details on the development of those specific code amendments will present, be presented in the third section a little later on. And lastly, just as we were working through those code amendments, just wanted to share some of the places that we looked. So some of the jurisdictions that were reviewed included Bend, Redmond, Medford, Grants Pass and Bellevue in Washington. And then also did some outreach to, directly to some service providers and housing organizations such as Square One in Eugene, Oasis Village in Redmond and Rogue Retreat in Medford. Now on to our guest presentation for tonight. We're lucky to have Sam Engel here with us tonight to share more about the housing services that Rogue Retreat provides in Southern Oregon. Rogue Retreat is known for its creative housing programs, including tiny house villages, low-barrier shelters and campgrounds. Rogue Retreat provides supportive services that help program participants reach their highest potential. Stephanie Denneke also attended the September Planning Commission meeting to provide some insight into their discussion and we were lucky enough to have Sam back here with us tonight. And so Sam, I'm going to stop sharing.
Sounds good. Thank you.
All right, yeah, take it away.
Is it okay if I show the screen?
Yeah, you should be able to.
You're good to go, Sam.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Sorry, I am having. How's that?
Looks good.
Looks good.
Fantastic. Thank you. Well, thank you for having me this evening and I want to compliment your staff in the outreach and also in helping us to, us to prepare for the meeting this evening. And I apologize, Stephanie Denneke can't be here this evening, so you're stuck with just me. But I want to start off with just kind of a brief overview. We're gonna go kind of quickly just through a handful of slides. Feel free to stop me at any point if you would like to ask questions. And then really hoping to end with some questions too, but also focus mostly on the operating model itself. And then how, how we see the positive impacts and then a couple of the instances of reproduction. When we got into starting this model, we also consulted with Square One Villages because they were leading a lot of this work and then some other programs around the, around the country, particularly in the South. Because this was such a new model in Southern Oregon and in Oregon, a lot has changed since then. And we can talk about that a little bit later on too. So who Rogue Retreat is and what we do. Rogue Retreat's been around since 1998. And that list that Evan showed a little while ago that kind of ended with the subsidized and unsubsidized supported housing, that's where we started. We started with conversations and groups and then a pretty high-barrier housing model. Over time, we've seen the advantage of adding lower and lower barrier models. In 2018, when we developed Hope Village, it was the lowest barrier program that we ran. And what our programs are really defined by are two things. The program itself and the support that's offered to guests in the, in the managed programs and then the physical safe places where those programs are delivered. And we keep changing the physical spaces over the years, but it's really the core services delivered by peers that we find makes the program effective. Peers are a type of traditional help worker through the state of Oregon. All of our peers have gone through at least a 40-hour certification and they have substantial lived experience that puts them into a very empathetic and compassionate place with our, with our guests and participants. What separates a peer out from a coach or a counselor is that the peer uses their, their lived experience as a way to bridge a gap with a participant who's going down that road themselves towards recovery, but without using their path as a specific guideline or pathway that that, that guest has to follow. So for example, if one of our guests used an NA program or one of our staff used an NA program as part of their sobriety pathway, that wouldn't necessarily be the correct pathway for the guest they're working with. So it's really more about helping the individual find, find their route. So Hope Village in pictures, kind of clockwise, starting in the top left. That is the gravel pathway and the small porches. Each of those units is divided down the middle, set up as a duplex. There, the second picture, you see the inside of the unit. There's a bed, space underneath. Some of the units have a loft space above too for additional storage. And then it's a, it's a pretty small space and so people are limited on what they can bring in. There's a kitchen trailer that is a reclaimed food truck that was used for wildland firefighting several years ago and it's holding up pretty well. Down below, we do have a, two community rooms. One is where case management services are delivered. There's peer services. That's also where the computer lab is for job hunting and banking and other things that guests are doing, as well as laundry, shower, ADA shower and toilet are in there as well. And then the bottom left corner, that is our shower trailer and. So this was initially set up before the transitional housing standard in Oregon had been adopted. And so initially, this was set up as a campground under the city of Medford's Development Code, which is one of the reasons it has a little bit different look than some of the newer programs do. And we'll talk about one of the kind of reproductions or, sorry, it's been a long day. One of the other villages that was developed in the area kind of based on this model is a lot more modern looking. Handful of downsides to this model are that the gravel pathway is not ideal for walkers or wheelchairs or ADA access. And we do run into a number of people who, who need that additional support. So we've installed ramps at a number of places. They're not pictured here. And then we operate other sites that are a little bit more friendly and conducive to folks that do have limited mobility. So our, our operating model, very similar to a slide that Evan shared a couple of minutes ago. So we start with street outreach. And again, that's kind of that peer delivery model inviting people in who may be interested in coming in and taking those next steps in their life. We have a medical respite program that is a little bit higher barrier. Does have a referral requirement through a medical provider. And that's designed for people who are typically chronically homeless and don't have a safe place to recover from medical procedures. And then we case manage those folks and we try and get them involved in other longer-term, more stable programming. Low-barrier shelters, chronically, chronically unhoused individuals with or without other barriers. We do have a campground. We have a congregate dormitory-style shelter as well as a non-congregate village that looks an awful lot like Hope Village in its physical structure, but doesn't have some of the barriers and sobriety requirements and things that Hope Village does. We have two villages that we are running, Hope Village and another one that we call Crossings Village. Crossings Village has a different type of unit. We are able to purchase something called a FOLDAM. It's a modified shipping container. It looks like a modified shipping container. But other than how it looks from the outside, it's very similar. Heaters, air conditioners, electrical outlet to plug in power medical equipment or charge cell phones, lighting. Our villages do have a 30-day sobriety requirement as well as an income requirement. We ask people to pay part of their own costs while they're there, as well as a small utility fee. So that's typically around $300. And then the goal is to help people develop their personal finances and then move out of our program within, you know, the time period that works well for them, but typically it's around six to 12 months. We did see that change an awful lot during COVID. When Hope Village was first developed as a transitional housing program, the idea is that people would be here for three to six months. We saw a lot of reasons to change that and that we don't put a specific timeframe on the individual. It's really more about their specific progression. Other models use, use more rigid timelines. We also have havens, which are group housing model, which may or may not be the, the best fit for different individuals. And then we have subsidized and unsubsidized apartments. Two other quick notes about Hope Village, the staffing model. We have two daytime weekday staff. They're both peer case managers. We have a maintenance crew that serves all of our sites, but definitely spends a lot of time at Hope Village. We have other peers that will come and assist with healthcare navigation, getting people rides as needed and helping people coordinate other aspects of their, of, of their path. And then we have the administrative team that supports this work. We also have a guest duties list and so this is treated like a gated community. People have to sign in and sign out if they come to visit. And there's some land to maintain, you know, the garden and some other things, restroom cleaning. And all of the residents take turns doing some of those chores. Some of the positive impacts and outcomes that we've seen from this program. When we first started the project in 2018, we had 14 units and we were put on a timeframe with the city of Medford and asked to pay a pretty substantial deposit because there was a lot of concern that this project was going to not be successful and that we were going to have to pay for, for our own cleanup when we left. After about a year, we were refunded that deposit and then asked if we would double the program to 28 units. Since 2020, it's grown from those 28 units now to 36. We added the last four last year. This is still designated as an urban campground. At the time this was developed, cities were only allowed to have two urban camp sites. And the city of Medford advocated for that change in state policy, partially because of the success of this model. That advocacy and that change allowed us to later in 2023, no, I'm sorry, yeah, in 2020, to open the urban campground in Medford, which was temporary. And then that was expanded in the executive order 2302 and Senate Bill 5019 funding to now include that other expanded village. The, one of the main investment data points behind this project led a lot of our healthcare partners to invest in, in supporting villages and supporting the case management model specifically, is that we saw a 64.18% reduction in substance use relapses. So that would be people who have gone into inpatient drug and alcohol treatment and wouldn't necessarily have had a safe place to recover otherwise. So in this case, they're going into a sober living and safe environment that has those other supports around it instead of being discharged back to the circumstances that they were in prior to inpatient drug and alcohol treatment. One of the reasons that that's noteworthy within a local economy is that drug and alcohol treatment tends to be $700 or $800 per day for 30 to 90 days.
Sam, could you repeat what you just said? I'm sorry, your audio cut, cut out your last sentence. Do you mind repeating it?
Yeah. The inpatient drug and alcohol programs tend to be about $700 to $800 per day for 30 to 90 days. And our program tends to be about $300 a month, which is a substantial difference. And so that's, that's where a lot of the investment from the CCOs and the other healthcare partners came to support this model. We've seen substantial improvements in participants' self-sufficiency scores. When people come in, we do our own, we call it the SSOM, so self-sufficiency matrix, where we sort of have people assess themselves on a score of one to five on 15 kind of major categories of personal stability. We take that average. It's, you know, typically two and a half to 3% when they come in or two and a half to three when they come in and about four and a half when they're ready to leave. And that's things like connection to education, connection to social networks, income. So the model has evolved significantly largely because of participant and community input. Again, it started off as a, a three-month low-barrier program. We've added other low-barrier programs and we've made this into a sober living program. It tends to support itself in its own sustainable funding because of those guest payments and also because of the contracts that we have to deliver case management. More than half the people who leave the program leave so successfully, meaning for us, that means that they're leaving into a more stable living environment. And then this model has been replicated locally. Oh, about four years ago, Taylor Grable and your staff and I worked on. Oh, about four years ago, Taylor Grable on your staff and I worked on developing uh, Foundry Village in Grants Pass, uh, which is a, a more modern and follows closer what the current trans- transitional housing standards are. Uh, we've replicated it ourselves locally here with the Crossings Village. Um, and then we've had a handful of uh, conversations like this and other, watched other programs develop around the state and around the region. So one of the big questions that everybody asks is two things. One, if you're transitioning into transitional housing, where are you coming from? And so this is definitely part of that step out of a shelter or out of a lower barrier program. Uh, and then where are you going to transition to? Um, and that, that gets back into having community affordable housing and that whole kind of spectrum and continuum of housing. When we came into the neighborhood, again, we were asked to pay a deposit with the uh, assumption that we may be asked to clean up our, our, you know, our site when we left. What we ended up finding is that by doing a couple of things, uh, making sure that we had some pretty solid guest agreements around behavior and putting up a large white vinyl fence and treating the community like a gated community. The behavior from our guests was very good. Um, the relationship with their neighbors improved from one of anxiety and um, you know, a little trepidation or even fear um, into a, a pretty decent working relationship. Um, our, one of our neighbors who was the most concerned ended up bringing over zucchini bread um, the first summer that we were open. And we've invited the neighbors in for Christmas, uh, you know, open houses and things along those lines. But again, treating it like a community and asking the guests to treat it like a community. We put in a small community garden. There's horseshoe pits. There's a, there's a, a room for folks to watch TV uh, and connect. We have weekly site meetings where the guests are um, given a life skills training every week. Um, guests participate in at least weekly case management. Uh, we did a neighborhood survey when we were getting ready to open up another program in the neighborhood. And largely we got positive responses, about 73% positive response rate. We also ran into three of our former participants who are now living in apartments in the neighborhood, which was great, a great win. Um, so we did have one guy, his biggest complaint was that he wished we would stop calling and noise violations on him. Uh, he really likes to feed his chickens when he gets home at night and um, I hadn't expected that. Um, but again, you know, we're, we're all living in the same community. We're all sharing fences and uh, we're all working on the same 10:00 PM noise ordinances. And so we were able to relocate some of the guests that got up earlier for work to the other side of the property to kind of fix some of those neighbor, neighborly uh, over fence disputes. But putting up that big white vinyl fence made a huge difference. It made us one of the nicest looking things in the neighborhood. And then shortly after the program opened, people kind of forgot we were there, which is the goal. We just integrated into the neighborhood. It's, it is mixed commercial residential. Um, and so there's an awful lot going on in the neighborhood in general. Um, having behavior based participant agreements has been huge. And then having um, behavior based case management to help people understand uh, the impact of their actions on their neighbors. And 36 people living in a relatively small space. Um, you can have a lot of uh, internal neighbor, neighbor conversations that need to happen. And treating it like a community within a community. Something that we hadn't anticipated when we first opened this was the need for parking. Um, again, when we started this, it was pretty low barrier and not a lot of our folks were employed or had uh, vehicles. The longer people stay in this program, especially when they do have to have an income requirement to be here. Typically, the more money they end up making, the more stable they get, the more vehicles our residents own. And so we've had to get a little bit creative with parking and walking and bus tickets. Um, but all of that uh, is something that we would plan a little bit different and somewhere you get to learn from our learning process. And then I can stop there. I can really talk about our projects all day, but I won't do that to you. And I'd rather open it up to your questions if you have any.
Thank you so much. Um, I'll go to the counselors on Zoom first, uh, which is our council president, Councilor Geary and Councilor Chenoweth. Uh, do any of you have questions you'd like to ask at this time? And anyone on the dais have anything? Counselor Payne?
Thank you, Sam. What's the total lot size of space that you're occupying?
I should have had that loaded and I'm sorry, I don't. Um, it's about, it's about two acres.
Thank you.
Oh, Councilor Chenoweth.
Yes, thank you. A good presentation. I have a couple of questions. Um, in looking at those pictures, those looked like they were predominantly pictures taken at the original building of the facilities. Um, and I'm curious, do you have, and I tried to go online to see if, if Google Maps might have given me a view of what it looks like in a more recent time. But as you described fencing, that was, that is an accurate description. You couldn't see well. And I would say the neighborhood didn't look like it was being um, overly impacted by, by the facility. So a compliment to that. Um, but I wonder if you have pictures of, you know, several, you know, a year after, how, how does it look over time? Does, do we see these, this area? I mean, we don't want to build an area and have areas that are, the lack of a better way to put it. And I'm trying to be cognizant of, of, of how people would feel. But we don't want to be building slums, right? We want to be building an area people are going to be proud of. How do these things last over time?
Yeah, that's a, that's a great question. So actually, these pictures are both um, from this past week. You can see our corn didn't do very well. It should be a lot taller than that. Um, we, that area down there where you see the garden, that was initially a much larger community garden that was in the ground, uh, built in partnership with OSU Extension. We ended up taking that out because people weren't staying long enough to fully utilize it. And so replacing that with these smaller individual units that were donated. And then the, the horseshoes and the picnic table made it, made a bigger impact on people. Um, we do have a landscaper that we pay, um, also somebody who's got a lot of lived experiences as much as we can work with people who have kind of come through similar projects or our programs. Uh, we do. Um, up top, you can see the dog kennels. We don't have a lot of dogs in right now. So that's become more of kind of a sitting area uh, for people. Um, these pictures, the bottom left picture, you can see that is a construction maintenance group. The kitchen picture on the top, that is recent and the laundry facility, uh, that is also a recent picture. Um, and then the unit, the picture in the middle with the cot, that's a recent picture too. One of the things that-
Hold on, I'm catching you right there. When you say recent, what's the timeframe estimate? I know you can't give me specifics and that's fine, but estimating, what's the timeframe from original building of these pictures to recent pictures? What's, what, how much time has elapsed?
Uh, those three pictures, the cot, the kitchen and the laundry facility, those are four years on.
Nice, okay.
Yeah. So this was built in 2018. Um, we have had to do some maintenance. The biggest maintenance that we're having to do right now is the floor in the bathroom. Um, there was some leaking around the uh, rubber coving on the wall that got down into the floor. And so we're having to do a subfloor replacement in there. Uh, with the units themselves, they were built with three quarter inch plywood walls that were then coated. So that's not drywall. That's built to be kind of bulletproof. Um, the floor, as much as we can use like an industrial grade vinyl we do or laminate, uh, just because they hold up really well and they don't, they don't really succumb to water. Ventilation is really important because it's a small space. Um, and so those are built for cross drafting. I don't know how well you can see. Up at the top of those have those little windows and those, those are built just for cross drafting in there. Um, and when we first made them, we weren't required to put in a lot of things you'd normally have for building. Um, smoke detectors weren't required, egress windows were. Um, but there was no electricity and there was no heating and cooling. So we've gone back in and retrofitted those things. Which has made a really big difference in people's comfort, especially if people have stayed a little bit longer and we've made that a higher barrier program.
Retrofitted heating, air conditioning and fire alarms?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, actually you can, you can see the smoke detector there on the wall.
And then the, the last question I have, and of course, obviously if something like this comes to fruition, the goal would that it be, would be that it would, in our minds, we ob- obviously would want it to last forever, so to speak, or as, as long as the need is present. Um, hopefully you work yourself out of the job would be a hope, but um, so on, on that thought, um, in terms of um, if there's an exit strategy needed, how easy are these items to be removed if it's decided down the road that they're no longer needed or for other reasons they need to be removed? Are we talking a major process? Are we talking, you know, what, what are we talking about?
Yeah, actually, so, so because this site was designed to be temporary initially. I don't know how well you can see. Okay, there we go. So these are not on a foundation. And they're duplexed and then those duplexes are, are bolted together in the middle. So they can be unbolted and then they can be loaded up onto a flatbed. Um, so we, we had put this into practice. We'd gotten a grant to start building these a couple of years ago. Um, and for some reason, we built them on site rather, we built them offsite and then had to transport them rather than building them on site, which would have, in the future, we're going to do it that way. So we, we just worked with a commercial shipping company. And uh, and our local city works department and we got those loaded up uh, two at a time onto commercial flatbeds and we were able to move those the same way that you do, you see a tow truck towing a tow truck sometimes. Um, not an elegant process, but it worked.
And obviously we don't, we would want to build something that's so um, easy to remove that it doesn't feel like we're building a permanent home for somebody. But on the other hand, we don't want to have something that doesn't have a, a thought out exit strategy either. Uh, so I just want to cover both those bases. Thank you for answering my questions.
No, my pleasure. Thank you.
Uh, Councilor Chenoweth, just to follow up on that, that was part of the discussion that um, the Affordable Housing Committee and the Planning Commission had uh, relative to the ability to utilize some land that's not currently developed. But maybe that property owner has future plans for development on it. So this interim solution by having uh, similar uh, in the code, you see them as sleeping units um, that are these modular units that can be moved to another site if necessary. And also having minimum um, land improvements on the site as well.
Heather, I take it there's already a, 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 a preferred location where we might do this?
There's a couple of properties that are uh, under discussion, but this is something that could be modeled. Uh, the part, what you'll see in the code is um, a discussion of what zones make the most sense to um, have this as a allowed use um, and where, and where they can be located in the community. Yes, there's a couple of projects under discussion. The other, the other conversation that the Planning Commission had when um, Rogue Retreat presented to them was um, similar to, I think what you were getting at in terms of the sustainability of the village in terms of maintenance and self-governance, I guess I would call it that. And so what we heard was that people are so grateful to be able to have a place like this to achieve some housing stability as they work towards, you know, uh, getting to a place in their lives where they can then uh, launch into permanent housing stability that they kind of self-govern behavioral issues as well as uh, nuisance issues, if that's right, Sam.
Yeah, it is. Um, I think at, at the core that everybody wants to be a good neighbor. Uh, and we've also found that there's some things that just make sense for us to provide that make that as easy as possible. Um, some of that is helping people with transportation if they need it. But a lot of it is like, we provide a lot of the maintenance for the site and we provide toilet paper for the bathrooms, soap and hand sanitizer and some of those other things. But then the guests are typically on their own for a lot of other things. We do charge, we have a coin op for the washers and dryers. And that creates a fund to replace washers and dryers.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor, for giving me the opportunity.
Absolutely. Anyone else with uh, questions at this time, either on Zoom or at the dais? All right, I am not seeing any additional questions. Thank you so much. Do you have more that you'd like to present or?
No, that was, that was the end of the presentation. I think the only, the only other two things that I, I maybe want to add just, just briefly and rhetorically. One is once people get into housing and, and they get stabilized, uh, they're not homeless anymore, which is, you know, as, as a rhetorical piece, but it also does translate a lot, the longer people are here, typically the better, both the better neighbors they become. But then also the more things that people tend to acquire. Uh, just anybody who's got a, ever had a garage knows how you tend to fill it up over time. And so there's kind of a self-limiting nature to a lot of these programs where people tend to want to move on um, and get more comfortable and get more space. Uh, the other one is that we've all had our low moments in our lives and none of us want to be defined by those moments. Um, and so creating an opportunity for somebody to build more highs in their life than they've had lows uh, is, is really meaningful in um, helping to tell the next chapter of their story. And I'm, I'm glad to see that McMinnville is so eagerly uh, embracing some of these, these projects.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We greatly appreciate your time today. Thank you for visiting with us and uh, for a wonderful presentation and for the work that you're doing in your community.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. So now I'm going to be moving into the proposed code amendments. The code amendments that are being proposed are based on recommendations from staff and the Affordable Housing Committee. The Planning Commission will continue to move forward with the refinement of these regulations as well. And city council may provide additional guidance and feedback at this meeting that staff can bring back to the Planning Commission for further discussion. So circling back to the purpose of the Transitional Housing Code Amendments, the Affordable Housing Committee had two primary goals in mind when beginning this work. One, to develop a clear permitting procedure. And two, to provide relief for transitional housing development to lower the barriers and allow more flexible building models. Um, and so just kind of looking at the difference here between the standard residential development and transitional housing. Just that transitional housing isn't going to be financed by that market rate return on investment. And so an acknowledgement of uh, some of the costs that go into building and development code standards and uh, providing some relief to kind of acknowledge that and make it a little bit easier to provide uh, this needed housing in the community. So beginning with the housing to types that are proposed under the Transitional Housing Code, uh, there's three housing types that are defined. One, uh, that are dwelling units. So these meet the building code definition and provide three key characteristics. One, that they include sleeping arrangements. Two, um, a private bathroom and sanitation. And three, a kitchen or a food preparation area. The second housing type uh, that's being termed sleeping units are not dwelling units. They consist of different constru-, uh, they, they may consist of different construction methods. And they do not need to have a bathroom or a kitchen. They may have one or the other, uh, but they cannot have both. Um, the sleeping units will need to meet all international property maintenance code regulations for uh, habitable and occupiable buildings. So this includes things like light, heating, insulation, ventilation and minimum square footage. They will need to meet building and fire code regulations for things like fire safety and structural design. And things like, like wind loads, weather loads and seismic. And then the third housing type, uh, congregate living facilities are also proposed as an allowed housing type under transitional housing. These would be similar to single room occupancy development, uh, which the city already has adopted standards for. However, under the Transitional Housing Code, uh, again, there's some of that relief from uh, some of the development standards that are required in relation to the single room occupancy route. So going from kind of the building type into the land use and zoning regulations, the Affordable Housing recommendation is that transitional housing would be an outright permitted land use in all residential zones. The OR zone and the C3 zone. Um, staff and the AHC recommend that setting clear and objective standards for transitional housing, uh, would allow it to be an outright permitted uses in these zones. And, um, with that goal, it's also recommended that the transitional housing would go through a director's administrative review process, so there would not be additional requirements for a neighborhood meeting, public noticing, or a public hearing. Uh, the Planning Commission is holding, uh, quite a bit of discussion around which zones, uh, should allow transitional housing. There have been suggestions to allow it in all zones, including industrial lands, while others have been more hesitant to allow it in R1 and R2, which are the larger lot residential zones. Um, and they're also kind of having some discussion around the noticing and the public hearing requirements as well, as far as the actual, like, permit type, um, and the process that that would follow. Uh, Councilmember Chenoweth?
Yeah, thank you. I just really want to stress, I think this is a very bad idea. I, I understand the concerns of what neighbors can do, but we, we, we can't, I think there needs to be a requirement, and there needs to be involvement with the neighborhood, um, allowing them to understand what's, what's going to be coming into the neighborhood with a thoughtful, you know, some of these pictures that I saw today overcame objections I would have had. And I think it's better to be transparent and thoughtful than it is to kind of surprise. So I, I, I think this, this should be really reconsidered.
Thank you, Counselor. I'm going to ask Council to hold the rest of their questions until staff gets through their presentation, and then we'll come back and ask questions at the end and comments at the end. Thank you.
Um, so moving into development size limitations, uh, this might be one of the most important things to figure out, um, is still kind of setting the scale of which development should occur in relation to the zoning, uh, district that it's located in. Uh, this may mean some distinctions in densities or the bulk of, uh, building sizes. Uh, the proposal is to have transitional housing comply with maximum building height standards and building setback or yard requirements for the underlying zone. Um, but the kind of intention of doing some of this scaling is to establish limitations that, um, would make sure that transitional housing projects fit the scale of the surrounding development in the neighborhood. So moving into some of the required shared facilities, uh, so this table's broken up into, uh, just kind of all housing types, so that would include, uh, the dwelling units, but below is for the non-dwelling units, so the sleeping units and the congregate living facilities, uh, would also have some additional requirements for shared facilities. Um, so starting with all housing types, they all would require trash collection, secure storage, uh, domestic animal areas, and, uh, minimum parking stalls, which would be similar to other residential uses. And then for non-dwelling units, um, excuse me, um, so just kind of relating to toilet showers and, um, kitchens, there would need to be, um, a shared facility where those are provided. The building code is what sets the minimums for those. Um, so again, these are only the minimum requirements, uh, that the building code would set, and it wouldn't preclude a managing agency from adding more if that's what they, uh, deemed necessary. And then looking at development regulations, um, so some of the requirements for transitional housing, there would need to be adequate utilities to serve the proposed development. Any proposed signage would need to comply with the underlying zoning regulations. There would be a requirement for perimeter fencing and screening. Uh, the intent behind this is to provide privacy and an increased sense of security for residents. Um, and talking with agencies, uh, such as Rogue Retreat, like Sam was mentioning, um, who are operating these transitional housing developments, they've all suggested having a standard for this, um, and the idea is that the Planning Commission will continue to refine that regulation. Uh, moving into site lighting, the intention here is to increase a sense of safety and security for residents. Um, and again, managing agencies during, uh, my outreach also recommended having a standard for this. Um, and then parking, um, just a little bit more detail, this is looking like, uh, we would kind of be working with something consistent with similar residential uses, including, uh, just single detached dwelling units or the SROs. And again, uh, this would be a minimum space requirement, but it would not preclude, uh, managing agency from adding more parking if they find that that's necessary over time. Then kind of the last section of the, uh, proposed code amendments focus on the management and operations standards. These regulations are meant to set clear expectations of how the transitional housing developments should be managed and maintained over time. Uh, these are unique requirements for transitional housing that do not exist for other residential uses. For this reason, it's intended to offset some of the relief that is provided in the previous section related to site improvements and development standards. So starting with the qualifying operating agency, um, it is the same as what is allowed under state law for emergency shelters. So the examples include a local government, an organization with at least two years' experience of operating, uh, that can either be a local housing authority, a religious corporation, or a public benefit corporation. Um, and then the third, uh, qualifier is a nonprofit corporation that is partnering with one of those qualifying agencies. Uh, there would also be criteria for residents who qualify. There's some further refinement of code, uh, needed, but the Affordable Housing Committee is kind of looking at the zero to 60%, um, AMI, or that, um, a resident is experiencing s-, uh, some sort of a personal need, whether it's physical, mental, um, or addiction. And then kind of the two, uh, documents that are reviewed by the city, um, related to management and operations, uh, first one being a management plan. So this would be reviewed and approved by the city director. It includes details such as the service, uh, supportive services that are provided, security procedures, a maintenance plan, and other organizational policies. And then the supportive services, um, these are, these would be required, they can be provided onsite or offsite, and must be detailed in the management plan. Uh, these are designed to help residents create and execute a personalized plan for achieving housing stability, including regular case management and peer support, workshops on relevant educational topics, applying and interviewing for jobs, and budgeting. And then kind of the next piece of the management and operations and a few more, uh, requirements that are being proposed in the code amendments, uh, is having a resident code of conduct that is reviewed and approved by the city director. Um, there was a discussion at the Affordable Housing Committee, um, so the ORS 197746, um, allows an exemption from landlord-tenant law. Uh, and, um, the Affordable Housing Committee's recommendation was to utilize this exemption, um, primarily to allow managing agencies the ability to evict disruptive tenants that are not complying with the code of, uh, conduct up above. Um, then, agency reporting, so an annual report would be submitted to the city for review and data tracking. And then the enforcement and compliance piece of it, uh, which more refinement would also need to come for this section, um, but really just needing to make sure, uh, that there's a clear path for the city to enforce the requirements that are required, um, in this section. And then, uh, almost done and moving into just a discussion, but just wanted to, uh, kind of clarify one more thing, um, relating back to the purpose of transitional housing, which is to get people into permanent, stable housing. Um, it's been recommended that tents and yurts should not be per, a permitted transitional, transitional housing type. Um, you see that the icons used for transitional shelters and transitional camping include yurts and tents. Um, but it's been recommended that if there's interest in setting standards, uh, for transitional shelters or transitional camping at a later date, uh, that tents and yurts could be considered under those regulations. Um, it's worth noting that the prohibition of tents and yurts as a transitional housing type would not preclude a property owner from participating in the temporary, uh, camping program. And then, lastly, an important distinction is that any, uh, proposal which is identified as a qualifying emergency shelter under ORS 197, uh, 782 would be reviewed for compliance with state law and approved accordingly through that, uh, state process. So, moving into discussion, um, I did want to make note of, uh, the fact that a subcommittee has been developed for transitional housing specifically. The Planning Commission felt it was important to do more public education, engagement, and outreach on the proposed code amendments. The public engagement, uh, is intended to focus on describing the need, how these housing projects would respond to that need, and the case studies from around the state that demonstrate success. The Planning Commission also requested more opportunity for public input during this code adoption process, to inform people about what is being proposed, and to allow an opportunity for public input and questions to occur prior to finalizing a public hearing draft proposal or conducting, uh, formal public hearings for adoption of proposed amendments. An open house opportunity, uh, is tentatively scheduled for early December, and the Transitional Housing Subcommittee has been formed to assist in the public messaging and outreach component of this work. The Subcommittee, uh, may conduct future presentations to the Planning Commission and City Council on topics, um, that are relevant to their findings. And then, the Subcommittee is made up of represent, uh, representatives from Henderson House, Habitat for Humanity, Yamhill County Health and Human Services, um, YCAP, Encompass Yamhill Valley, and the Housing Authority of Yamhill County. So the timeline that we are looking at right now for the proposed code amendments, um, is having this work session tonight and bringing any guidance or feedback that we receive back to the Planning Commission in November, um, so that we can kind of refine that discussion before going to an open house in December. Um, and then being able to take in what we hear and the questions or concerns that we receive at that open house, bring them back to the Planning Commission in January, uh, before moving forward with the public hearing and adoption process. So, uh, with the time that we have left, and, uh, Director Richards let us know when we need to make sure we have, uh, time for the second, second topic, but what we're seeking input on, um, tonight are really, are the draft code amendments headed in the right direction? Are there thoughts or input on which zones transitional housing should be allowed in? And then any other feedback or considerations for the proposed regulations?
Great. Thank you. Um, and will 20 minutes be enough for the work session regarding FEMA? Okay, so that gives us about seven minutes, so if Counselors can keep their thoughts and comments to essentially a minute or less, so we have time to go through the whole dais, I would appreciate it. Um, would anybody like to jump in, or I can just go, uh, through, uh, Counselor Peralta? Would you like to start?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the presentation by the staff. I'm in favor of the code amendments recommended. Um, I would not be in favor of, um, extending temporary transitional housing to include, uh, yurts or tents, um, at this time or likely in the future. Um, I don't feel very strongly about which housing, which zones we apply these rules to. I guess I would be curious, um, you know, without giving a specific location, the, some of the preferred locations that, um, have been identified, what kind of zones are those in right now? Okay. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I would definitely be in favor of that, as well as, um, uh, potentially in the industrial zones and non-residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Payne.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, so I'm going to try to prioritize.
Uh, why don't you do two, and then if we, and then we'll come back to you.
Perfect. Uh, so my primary concern, I guess, is the requirement to not notify neighbors, um, just noticing, not necessarily neighbor approval, but noticing, it seems kind of counterintuitive when signage is required. Um, so just, that's a point. And then the landscaping and the financial security are a little bit contradicted in the management plan, so just kind of questions about refining that.
I just wanted to clarify on the signage. Um, we're not requiring signage, but if they propose signage, it needs to comply with the zoning district regulations for that.
Come back to me.
Thank you, Counselor Menke.
I'm generally in favor of all of the proposals, so, um, this is a need that the Affordable Housing Committee feels strongly about, uh, because it's taking at least four years for people to get into any form of housing, even if they're waiting for vouchers or whatever. So it's, it's very necessary, and it would be wonderful to get some of these established.
Thank you. On Zoom, go to Counselor Chenoweth.
Thank you. Um, uh, one question I have, I, my understanding, and maybe, and you can correct me where I'm wrong on this understanding, is that Project Turnkey was supposed to be essentially transitional housing, um, you know, with, with the Navigation Center being immediate care housing. Um, so where does this fit in that scheme?
Uh, so the, the Navigation Center is an emergency low-barrier shelter with limited stay. I think it's 30 days, but don't quote me on that. Um, it's not more than that, we know that. Uh, in terms of Project Turnkey and how it fits in the spectrum of housing, um, I think I'd have to come back to you about that, because I don't want to speak for YCAP on how that's moving forward. But we have reached out to our housing providers, and they all sit at the table at the Affordable Housing Committee, um, and all have said that this need for transitional housing in terms of supply does not exist in the city.
So it's not being met, then?
Yeah.
My understanding was Turnkey was supposed to essentially be that, is, I guess, my point. Um, and so, um, I'm just, I guess you answered the question by saying it's not meeting the need.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, that was my main question, since you already answered my bigger one, which is, we, I really feel like, as a city, one of the most things we need to do is be transparent and be open to our constituents, and that would include noticing and having conversation and dialogue with them before we bring such things into their neighborhood.
Thank you, Counselor Gary.
Um, nothing to add to the discussion at the moment.
Thank you, Council President.
I have a few things, and I think probably would be better, sort of, putting them in written comments to staff and, uh, letting them get back to me that way in the honor of time, but just a few quick things is definitely, understand kind of the both sides of the noticing as far as NIMBYism, while also, um, notifying constituents of what could be moving into their neighborhood. Counselor Menke, I toured a facility like this, uh, seven years ago up in Portland at a LOC conference, and it was widely successful. Uh, my main concern is, you know, we opened this up from a land use perspective, but do we actually have an operator that can pull this off in a consistent fashion that is equitable for the entire community and, you know, keep the lines in the sand, per se, on behavior and sobriety and, and all the other things? And right now, what I've seen from the community, I don't know if we're there, and so I don't know if we should have the zoning to allow that to happen, to create a problem, um, until we have partners in the community that could operate this and pull this off.
Thank you. Counselor Payne, did you want to add anything at this time, or do you want to follow up with staff in writing as well, and then staff can respond to the entire council with that, that answers to Council President's questions as well? Or you want to drop one more in there?
Just one more, and then I'll send the rest as written comment or questions. Uh, to Council Presidents- To Council President's point, I guess I, I have concerns about the review process while we're in this state of sort of community stepping in to this new idea and practice, and that it's easier to restrict the, or make the policies less, or the process less restrictive later through, whether that's conditional use permit or a special permit. It feels like just while we're all getting acclimated, even as a community, that something slightly more restrictive than an administrative review might be more appropriate.
Thank you. And just to summarize, what I heard were some conversations around the notification process. I think my thoughts on that was, would be that it should be consistent with other allowed versus conditional use permits wherever that lands, that we should address things consistently and equitably throughout our code or aligned as much as possible. I heard from Counselor Peralta that he would be interested in seeing this move forward in all zones or permitted in all zones. I likewise would be amenable to if this was, if this, as this moves forward, that it could be available in all zones. And then also in line with the committee's recommendation, I heard commentary about continuing to distinguish between, I don't remember what your graphics called it, but the transitional shelter versus transitional housing. And I heard the committee's recommendation being reinforced of that tents or temporary shelter would not be considered transitional housing, and that if that was going to be considered, that that would come back at a later time, either under its own, under, under its own heading or otherwise, and I, I agree with that as well. And it sounds like we'll be getting more questions to you and have more response to continue the conversation. Thank you so much. And I also just want to say, I'm really happy to hear that there's a Subcommittee and that it's comprised of so many service providers and people that are already working with members of our unhoused community and, and really in touch to be able to provide services that will meet the need. So thank you, and thank you to the Affordable Housing Committee members for continued work on this. And with that, we're giving you seventeen minutes to present on FEMA. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors, and thank you for the thoughtful discussion about transitional housing, and thank you, Evan, for your leadership in that work. Really appreciate it. I'm excited to see where it goes. Medford has had tremendous success with their program, and I'd love to see that here. All right, so switching gears a little bit, we're going to talk about FEMA and the Endangered Species Act and a mandate that we recently received in terms of compliance with it. And tonight, I just want to share with you that this is informational, this is a daily evolving discussion within the state. We just got guidance from D L C D, the Department of Land Conservation and Development, in terms of F A Q sheet on late afternoon on Friday regarding this particular subject as well. So, but I wanted to bring it to you because there's a sense of urgency here. So this is a mandate from FEMA for all cities in Oregon that utilize the National Flood Insurance Program. It's based on a lawsuit settlement related to the Endangered Species Act. It requires better management of the floodplains to ensure that protected species in, in those repairing corridors are not negatively impacted by development. The reason why there's a sense of urgency is we have to show compliance for their pre-compliance implementation measures by December one of the year. Pre-compliance measures may necessitate action by you as city council, so we wanted to bring it to you as information tonight to set the stage for that future potential action that you may see on one of your agendas in the next month or two. Additionally, we will start doing annual reporting to FEMA and the state starting in January of 2025 as to how we are complying with this settlement. So in a nutshell, how did we get here? This started in 2009 with a, where some environmental advocacy groups sued FEMA in terms of not, not mandating Oregon to manage its floodplains better and that it was causing problems with endangered species. They did this in many states. In Oregon, there were specific species that they were talking about. A biological opinion was issued in 2016 that identified four species that were in our floodplains that had been endangered by the management of the floodplains. FEMA had a chance to go through a process of review, put together some implementation planning, moving forward now to 2024. What's happened is they have to go through a NEPA review in terms of what their implementation and action plan is. They're in that process right now, but in September of last year, they got sued again, stating that they were taking too long to implement their action plan in terms of responding to the settlement. So that led to July 2024, cities getting notice that we needed to be compliant with these, what's called pre-implementation compliance measures, as FEMA continues to work through their NEPA review on their final action plan. And that pre-compliance needs to occur by December one. McMinnville is in, is within a Salmon and Steelhead Recovery Domain, and we are also a National Flood Insurance Program community. So thus, we are part of this pre-compliance mandate, and this map shows the other communities that are involved in this as well. What is the National Flood Insurance Program? Essentially, it's an agreement between communities and FEMA about how we're going to manage our floodplains so that people can get flood, flood insurance for their properties if they're within a floodplain. So it's a quid pro quo program. FEMA makes the flood insurance available if communities voluntarily agree to regulate development in those floodplains using minimum floodplain management standards. McMinnville has twenty-one properties that participate in the National Flood Insurance Program with six million dollars of improvements associated with those properties. So if we don't come into compliance with the pre-compliance measures, we could potentially lose the NFIP program in this community, which would then mean those properties cannot get flood insurance. They, also, the National Flood Insurance Program requires as part of the management a permitting process for anything that occurs in the special flood hazard area. That is what we describe in McMinnville as a floodplain. And development is a federally defined term in this, in this particular program. It means any man-made change to improved or unimproved real estate, including but not limited to buildings or other structures, mining, dredging, filling, grading, paving, excavation, or drilling operations, or storage of equipment or materials. So it's much broader than what we would consider as structural development, the term definition of development. McMinnville does have quite a bit of floodplain. We're surrounded by different waterways, and so this is a map showing the waterways that we have around our community and within our community, and the floodplains associated with those. So the blue is our floodplain zones, both in the county and here in the city. In terms of floodplain management, the Planning Director serves as a floodplain manager, and we do have a floodplain management program. The way McMinnville does it is actually fairly unique, and, and in the past, has taken some heat in terms of the way we approach it, but now many people see it as the right management way. So essentially, what McMinnville has done is it's identified the floodplain, and it has set it aside in its land use system and really restricted development within the floodplain. So we have a comprehensive plan designation that's a floodplain comprehensive plan designation, and we have a floodplain area zone. So we've created this zone from a land use perspective, and then we restrict development in that zone. So we only allow three permitted uses in the zone: farming, a public park and recreation facility not requiring the use of any structure, and a sewage pump station. And then we allow six conditional uses, but they're only allowed if, after they have conducted a no-rise analysis to be able to be built in the floodplain. And that's a boat landing and launching facility, open land, recreational facility that requires the use of a structure, removal of sand, gravel, topsoil, or rock, landfill or diaked land, weapons training facility, and a wireless communication facility. And a no-rise analysis is actually a fairly intensive analysis to do. It costs money to do it, it costs money for the city to review it, it's not an easy step in the development process. So initially, we thought that with this restriction on development, that it would work for a no-development pathway of compliance within this program. Recently, we learned two weeks ago that it doesn't go far enough, our floodplain zone management, in terms of restricting development. So this shows our comprehensive plan map. What you see in light blue is our floodplain comprehensive plan designation that prevents development in those areas, and then we also have it as a zoning layer as well. So it's protected in a regulatory way. So why it doesn't go far enough is there's legal tests relative to this Endangered Species Act settlement. The legal test is twofold. One, that development in a special hazard flood area, so that's the floodplain in McMinnville, must result in no net loss of undeveloped space, pervious surface, and trees that are equal to or greater than six inches in diameter, four and a half feet up the tree. So no net loss. That's a pretty tough test in terms of those three different elements, and so it's not about the water level at this point in time, it's about protecting the habitat of the floodplains. And then again, remember the federal definition of development that has to prove it's not creating a net loss in those three tests is much more than a structural development. It includes things like grading, paving, excavation, or drilling. So what does compliance look like? There are three operative pathways for compliance for Oregon. They're, they're called PICMs, which is a pre-implementation compliance measure, and the three pathways are, we can adopt a FEMA model ordinance that I provided to you in the staff report. We can enter into a permit-by-permit habitat assessment and mitigation program, meaning if we want to permit one of those allowed or conditional uses in the floodplain, they would have to do a habitat assessment as well. Or we could prohibit floodplain development altogether, not allow anything to occur in the floodplain. Going through the three really quickly, we could look at adopting the model ordinance. It's a very complicated ordinance. I've been participating in a bi-weekly webinar that's occurring with planning directors across the state. Many of them are saying they can't bring this online into their community because it will be too difficult to minister and manage due to the type of expertise that's needed for it. And to be able to adopt it within the timeframe that we need to adopt it requires Measure Fifty Six noticing, noticing a D L C D, public hearings, and adoption process. And also a lot of education, and very few cities are actually choosing this pathway. Looks like only maybe the larger cities are that have more experienced staff. The other pathway is a permit-by-permit assessment and mitigation pathway. So there is regional guidance from Oregon that was just released in late August. So again, this is an ever-evolving program as we work towards December one. And what's come out of that is this opportunity to do a habitat assessment for permits in the floodplain. It's also very resource-intensive, so this assessment, as described by many people in the field, is actually more intense than the no-rise analysis in terms of the money to produce it, and then we would also need, so the person requesting the permit would have to invest in this assessment, and we, the city, would have to invest in people to review it. However, we have very few permits that are actually issued on our floodplain due to the limitation of what we use, what we allow there. So in the time that I've been here, I don't think, we just finished doing one for M V A advancements, which was just sort of improving some erosion that happened there, but we really have very few permits that come through that are relative to our floodplain. So if we did this permit-by-permit basis, the number would be very low, obviously, over the years. So many cities appear to be leaning in this direction, and another thing that is, that is appealing about this direction is if we don't, so we have to tell FEMA which pathway we're choosing, and if we don't tell FEMA which pathway we're choosing by December one, meaning that we've already adopted it, by the way, then we are by default doing this pathway.
We are by default doing pathway number two.
Yes, the habitat assessment one, thank you. So there are some things under this pathway that would not require a habitat assessment. So we've had some internal dialogue, we're going to continue to have internal dialogue and, and work with legal counsel and bring back a recommendation to you, but we had some concerns about what this means for McMinnville and the types of things we do. So the things that wouldn't require a floodplain permit and thus not, also not require a habitat assessment are things like routine maintenance. And we were concerned about what does it mean if we had, if you remember the ice storm we had, and we had to go in and, for public safety reasons, remove hazardous trees in the floodplain? Would we be able to do that? So yes, we can do those types of things, even if it's creating that no net loss of those, of those trees of six inches in diameter. We can also do road maintenance. We have roads down in Joe Dancer Park in the floodplain. Would we be able to continue to maintain those? Yes, your existing facilities, you can continue to maintain, you just can't expand them. And then there are other floodplain, there are other floodplain activities that you would need to have a floodplain permit, and we would require it as well with our existing zone, but you don't have to do the habitat assessment. So the settlement determined that this is not negatively impacting habitat. And one of the things that we were concerned about was development of open space and recreational facilities, because we talk about our parks that are in the floodplains, and we're, we would not be able to develop more parks, much like Joe Dancer has all the improvements it has in terms of the parking facilities and the roads and things like that, because we won't achieve the no net loss of pervious surface and undeveloped area. But we can do things like trails in the, in the floodplains for parks and open space, as long as we're not removing more than five percent of the native vegetation. So there's a clear and objective standard there, and we also can do repairing restoration because I think we have a couple of stream, stream restoration projects that we need to comply with as well. I did want to point out that Joe Dancer Park is in our floodplain. This is a picture of an aerial with the floodplain zone on top of it, and the types of improvements that are in there today, that would not be allowed moving forward without a habitat assessment for McMinnville as we continue to talk about how we utilize our floodplains based on this E S A settlement agreement. The existing situation can remain.
Can I pause? Is the same true for the McMinnville City Park, the lower city park?
Yeah, so it's, any park that we have that has structures in it today, or roads, or parking lots, things like that, that are in the floodplain, the existing conditions can remain, they can be maintained, they just can't be expanded without going through a habitat assessment.
Thank you.
That I know of today. We're, again, it's continuing, changing, we're diving deeper, we're getting more and more refined, so I just want to make sure that's clear, too.
Maintained and upgraded, or, or that's not clear yet?
You can't expand, so just like in my world with non-conforming uses, you can't expand the footprint or the functionality of the use, is the way I'm seeing it. But again, I think those things are going to continue to need to be legally refined. There's a lot of people around the table in Oregon asking these questions of FEMA, exactly what does this mean and what does that mean as we get more granular and granular in our understanding of the work. So I can't, I can't answer that entirely for you. We do have legal counsel engaged, and they will be working with staff as we continue to work on a recommendation for you. The last pathway is allow no development. So allow no development would mean amending our ordinance to allow no development per the federal definition, which is not what we currently have in there. We, again, wouldn't be able to do this with the noticing requirements by December one. We'd have to start it immediately and go through a Measure Fifty Six notice to do so. Measure Fifty Six means we send a notice to every person who owns property in the floodplain to let them know we're, we're to let them know we're, we're adopting something that will restrict their use of it even further. There is some discussion, DLCD on their Friday FAQ sheet sent out something saying that cities might entertain a moratorium on development. So if you recall, we did a moratorium on short-term rentals two years ago. And we're allowed to do that by state law. There's a process you go through, but it doesn't include the noticing in Measure 56 process that takes a lot of time. And it's a public hearing with city council. You adopt an ordinance with findings. We are limited to our moratorium not being more than 120 days, but it might buy us time to figure out the next, the pathway we want to take, if we want to do that. Oh, DLCD does believe that we would need to issue a Measure 56 notice for the moratorium as well. That's continuing to be dialogue because it just recently came up as a potential solution for cities. So Governor Kotek has weighed in on this. She sent a letter to FEMA on September 26 because the tight timeframe in which cities need to respond and amend their ordinances in, in Oregon is very difficult because we have a very complex land use process in terms of the noticing we need to give to residents and to the state about changing our codes. And so there are very few cities that are actually going, unless they started two months ago, they're not going to get through this by December 1. And so she has asked for more time. That letter went out September 26. Have not heard back on what that means. And then again, October 4, DLCD weighed in. DLCD has staff that is paid for by FEMA who are meant to help floodplain managers at the local levels manage their floodplains. So they're resources, they're expert resources for us. But they also say that they're not the ones that are mandating this compliance. So they're, it's, they're kind of in this neutral position. So the next steps for us, we're working with legal counsel to understand the different nuances of these three different pathways available to the city and what makes the most sense for us. We'll start having the internal staff meetings with key team members and discuss a recommendation to bring to you. You will see something from us prior to December 1. We probably won't be, may not be able to get through our process of adoption by December 1, but we are going to bring you something as soon as we can after having enough time to do the proper due diligence. More than likely, what we will do, we'll have a public hearing process. It will probably also include a DLCD notice or a Measure 56 notice, so individual property owner notice as well as notice to the state. And the three things, the bullet points there I've already talked to you about is the, the types of pathways that we could choose to take as McMinnville. So this is really just to let you know, to introduce you to the subject, let you know that something's coming your way at a future meeting as an agenda item. And staff will be working on this over the next several weeks with legal counsel.
Thank you so much. Unless any members of council have a burning question, I'm going to end the work session. We are a few minutes over. Just give that one second. Any burning questions? Not seeing any. I am, thank you very much for the presentation. I am going to end the work session at 7:03 PM. And I apologize, we are going to start the regular council meeting just a moment late. We're going to give members of the DIAS a second to step away. We will restart this meeting in three minutes. Thank you.
Yeah?
So I was told, and I don't think that what we were talking about just now, that's this, but I was told that we have, I know for a fact, we have several streams, or at least a couple of streams, and it goes on a creek. It's designated as a salmon-bearing stream, but it is no longer capable of bearing salmon because of the culverts that are in place throughout the stream at various points.
That might be a future option.
Well, I was told that, that those, in order to improve those, like, like the Cosine Dip, or the Davis Dip, that those culverts would have to be fixed so that salmon could pass through. And that would be the case for any of the culverts that need to be fixed throughout.
So right now, this is just sort of immediate internal measure to the SaaS model, because it's working on their long-term action. And that's part of the special.
So what, I mean, so it seemed like the second and third options were the more responsible options. To me, in concrete space, it seemed like the third one seemed like it maybe makes sense. So I was just, put a moratorium on development, and I heard what you were saying about parks, and now I don't know.
Yeah, so it really depends on the near term things you want to do. And then if it makes sense for the near term things that you want to do, you have a habitat assessment. But my understanding is that you have a habitat assessment for different things along the waterway?
Can you do, can you do like a moratorium and then on a case-by-case basis, do you have a trial assessment that would allow it in certain instances?
So that would be pathway two?
Blanket, blanket block in certain instances, you would allow it. That's pathway three?
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the October 8th regular business meeting of the McMinnville City Council. Like to call the meeting to order and ask the city recorder to do a roll call, please.
Counselor Geary.
Good evening.
Counselor Menke.
Present.
Counselor Chenoweth.
I'm here.
Counselor Peralta.
Here.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counsel President Garvin.
Here.
Mayor Drabkin.
I am here. Thank you. And we're expecting Cub Scout PAC 522 and 454 this evening to do the pledge. Do we know any update where the scouts are? No.
Oh, I sent them an invitation but never heard back.
Oh, my.
Confirmed, so not sure.
All right. Well, we'll have to get the scouts back here to lead us in the pledge of allegiance soon then. Counselor Menke, would you do the honor of leading us in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. If you're able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, counselor. We're going to start this evening with a few proclamations. The great joy of attending a wonderful fundraiser for Henderson House this week, and our first proclamation will be accepted by Henderson House. Thank you for being here. This is Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Domestic violence is a complex and pervasive, pervasive problem in our community that affects individuals across all economic, racial, gender, educational, and religious backgrounds. Domestic violence is not just physical. It can also be verbal, psychological, and financial. Whereas each year in McMinnville, more than 1,000 residents request services due to domestic or sexual violence that they are experiencing, including emergency shelter, protection order assistance, safety planning, transportation, emergency room, and court accompaniment. And whereas 80% of women with children who are experiencing homelessness were previously victims of domestic violence, according to the Institute for Children, Poverty, and Homelessness. And 57% of all women experiencing homelessness stated domestic violence was the primary cause of their homelessness, according to Safe Housing Partnerships. And whereas domestic violence disproportionately impacts people from marginalized groups at disproportionate rates, including people with disabilities, members of the LGBTQ community, immigrants, older adults, and women of color. These are often a direct result of systemic barriers, inequities, and inherent racism, sexism, homophobia, ableism, ageism, and other oppressions in our society and service systems. And whereas the city of McMinnville joins with others across Oregon and the nation in supporting victims of domestic violence, as well as local programs, state coalitions, national organizations, and other agencies nationwide who are committed to increasing public awareness of domestic violence and sending a clear message to abusers that domestic violence is not tolerated in McMinnville. Now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 2024 to be Domestic Violence Awareness Month. We urge all city of McMinnville community members to actively work towards the elimination of domestic violence by supporting and believing in survivors and promoting healthy, respectful relationships. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this eighth day of October 2024. Rachel, would you like to come receive this?
Thank you, Mayor Drabkin, and to the city of McMinnville for your support of Henderson House and our survivors.
This is a proclamation for McMinnville Maid Month in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. Whereas manufacturing companies significantly contribute to national, state, and local economies and are celebrated annually on the first Friday in October with Manufacturing Day. And whereas manufacturing in Oregon represents 13.76% of the state's total economic output and supports 9.83% of the workforce. And whereas in 2021, the manufacturing sector generated $36.21 billion in output, employing approximately 187,000 people in Oregon with an average annual salary of $91,467. And whereas the Oregon Employment Department forecasts a 7% growth in the state's manufacturing sector from 2022 to 2032, with the primary metals manufacturing sector anticipated to grow the fastest at 19%. And whereas our community boasts 106 outstanding manufacturing companies in the city of McMinnville that produce a diverse range of products and a total of 360 manufacturers throughout Yamhill County. And whereas these companies add to the vitality and prosperity of our community by employing 2,216 people in McMinnville and 5,786 employees throughout Yamhill County. And whereas manufacturing has a revenue impact of $338 million in the city of McMinnville and nearly $956 million in, let's say, thousand, in revenue throughout Yamhill County. Now, therefore I, Remy Drabkin, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as McMinnville Maid Month in conjunction with the National Manufacturing Day. And in witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the official seal of the city of McMinnville to be affixed this eighth day of October 2024. Patty, did you want to come? Thank you. And actually, I will invite Patty Herzog back up because the next thing is a presentation of the Municipal McMinnville Economic Development Partnership and its annual update. Welcome, Patty Herzog, Executive Director.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor and council, for your sustaining support of McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. This evening, I'd like to present our annual report. And we'll just click through this really quick. Next slide. This slide continues to reiterate our vision, values, and mission. So we continue to be, I like to focus on our values, which our board came up with last year. We're focused on community. We want to be a trusted resource. We're focused on intentional growth and being adaptable and connecting our community. Next slide, please. This is a overview of our budget. As you can see, we have investor circle members. We are not a membership-based organization, so therefore, these are businesses within our community that have contributed to the overall mission. We have three sustaining funding partners. McMinnville Industrial Promotions provides $95,000 to our budget. McMinnville Water and Light provided $80,000 last year. And the city of McMinnville provides $88,000. That includes a $13,000 in-kind contribution for the use of the facility at the Community Development Center as law, as well as IT support. We couldn't do our job without the city's support, both in-kind and financial contributions. So we greatly value and appreciate your support. We do this with two staff members, Heather and myself, full-time. This year, we've been very fortunate to have some grant-funded positions. We had a full-time workforce development contractor who worked with us through the city's ARPA grant, the 8212, or as our board member Heather Richards refers to, the Nobel, Ron Noble Funds. So we were very fortunate to have Craig Brockett as our full-time workforce development contractor. We also, as part of that grant, had Jennifer Armata, who worked on a comprehensive, comprehensive business database for us as well. And then we had two part-time and a full-time position for the McMinnville Works Program. Next slide, please. Again, thank you to our sustaining funding partners. Can't, can't thank the city enough for your generous support of our work. Next slide. We put our work into four buckets: business retention and expansion, workforce development, business attraction, and innovation development. That also includes our entrepreneurship work. Next slide. We also do this by solving problems for our business community. We help connect them to resources, and we like to celebrate their successes. Next slide. I mentioned the city of McMinnville's 8212 grant, the Ron Noble Funds. I bring this up because I'm going to mention some of the data that we were able to pull as a result of that. One of the goals of that was a comprehensive business database. Because the city of McMinnville does not have a business licensing program, it is difficult to understand how many different businesses are operating within our community. Next slide, please. So what we are doing is putting together an in-process. We pulled from several data sources, including the Oregon Department of Employment, the Secretary of State. The city has received some information from the county tax assessor, and then through our own business engagement with Launch Mid Valley Program. Next slide. As a result, we were able to pull together some data, and this gives you distribution of the business community that we have based on industry sectors. What we've done is added some little detail to this as well, using Business Oregon's Oregon Prospector website, which has some data on there. And this shows, you know, healthcare and social assistance programs being the, the highest number at 21% of our business community. And at the other end, 4.79% of our business community is in manufacturing. We just had a proclamation on manufacturing month. So I think it's important to, to note on here that although it's the smallest industry sector- I bring this up because I'm going to mention some of the data that we were able to pull as a result of that. One of the goals of that was a comprehensive business database. Because the City of McMinnville does not have a business licensing program, it is difficult to understand how many different businesses are operating within our community. Next slide, please. So what we are doing is putting together an in-process. We pulled from several data sources, including the Oregon Department of Employment, the Secretary of State. The city has received some information from the county tax assessor, and then through our own business engagement with Launch Mid Valley Program. Next slide. As a result, we were able to pull together some data, and this gives you distribution of the business community that we have based on industry sectors. What we've done is added some little detail to this as well, using Business Oregon's Oregon Prospector website, which has some data on there. And this shows, you know, healthcare and social assistance programs being the highest number at 21% of our business community. And at the other end, 4.79% of our business community is in manufacturing. We just had a proclamation on Manufacturing Month. So I think it's important to note on here that although it's the smallest industry sector within our community, it has an overwhelmingly large impact on our revenues. $338 million in revenue impact to our community, second only to retail. And the other thing that I will mention here is this is mostly dollars coming into our community from outside. That's what manufacturing does, very high-paying jobs, as was mentioned in the mayor's proclamation. Next slide, please. Over the past year, we've had the opportunity to work with over 187 businesses within our community. We've broken those up into these four buckets, so you can see, the type is very small, but you can get a magnifying glass out and see if your business is on there. Next slide, please. A little bit of the highlights around Business Retention and Expansion. Next slide. I think this is really important to note. $5.5 million has been procured by businesses within McMinnville. The breakdown of that is $100,000 was given out in grants through Yamhill County, $1.12 million from the state, and then $4.25 million from federal grants received to businesses within our community. We had 48 business leads, and those come from a variety of sources there. Next slide, please. Just some of the pictures. Pictures tell a thousand words, right? So you can see some of the different industries that we've been able to work with over the past year, and we look forward to continuing to do those site visits and tours in the coming year. Next slide. We also have had some particularly interesting legislative tours. The Belgium consulate came out to visit Empower, which is one of our large manufacturers, food manufacturers, and has quite a bit of large direct foreign investment, as well as a tour with Water and Light. And we've had Director Chang out from Business Oregon. So it's been a really exciting year from a legislative point of view. Next slide. Workforce development. What we've got there, the business breakdown on the left-hand side here shows that most of the companies within our community have under five employees, one to four employees. 66% of the business community is made up of that. And then on the right side, it shows the industry breakdown, where those jobs are located. Next slide. The McMinnville Works Program celebrated its 11th season. Of note on here, 14 interns have positions within 10 companies in our community. And really exciting is that 50% of those interns received job offers at the companies where they were interning at. And that's exactly what the program was meant to do. Heather Hadley-Blank leads that program. It's really fantastic. What we could use is more host sites, so businesses, we need positions. We had over 300 applicants for that, for those internship positions. If we had more placement opportunities in communities, we could get more students placed. We continue to work on our Workforce Integration Network, the WIN, and we meet monthly with 53 of our regional partners when it comes to workforce development. Next slide. Some more information about our growing workforce. We've made lots of connections. I think it's important on this slide, lots of facts and figures, but you can see engineering, 241 engineering applications. Those fields of interest include IT, data entry, project management, and marketing. Again, 50% of those participating in the program received an offer. Next slide. The 8212 grant, these are some of the highlights from that. Craig Brockett was our workforce development contractor. His contract's wrapping up on the 11th, so Friday is his last day. He's accomplished an amazing amount of work in the time that he's been there through the generosity of the grant with the city. He's been able to work with the WIN group to establish the Jobs Board and Resource Directory to connect employers with job seekers. He's restructured and given new purpose to the WIN group, provided a mentorship program with the high school, did a seasonal hospitality job fair. Most exciting is probably the internship program with the hospital for healthcare jobs. And then tomorrow will be a cultural agility in the workplace training session. So we're really excited, free and open to the public to be a part of that. Next slide. We also work very hard to attract businesses to our community. Next slide. We focus on seven, creating seven to 10 jobs per acre with those, and we really look for companies that have leadership within our community. We want to create great working environments and want companies with leadership that are committed to our community. Next slide. These are some of the companies that have come to our area. Holt Industries has joined our community, Chamillion Industries as well. Etherform is going to be breaking ground soon on their expansion. Out at the industrial park, McMinnville Industrial Promotions purchased a lot on Colvin Court and is doing some build-to-suit opportunities there. And we continue to work with the city on development of the Three Mile Lane properties and also on the airport master plan. Next slide, please. Some of the larger sites that are available within our community, out at the industrial district, we've got 28 acres still available and 26 acres, and MIP and their 26 acres will be looking at how to develop that. Lot of exciting things coming for that property. Next slide. Some of the pictures again, so you can see, we've really focused on the airport, working with the city on the Northwest Rubber RFQ to get the information out on that as well. Next slide. Next slide, please. And the Launch Mid Valley Program, this is what we have to support our entrepreneurs and startups in our community. This has been very exciting, 323 participants in those. We've had a pub talk on People Planet and Profits. And also, as part of that, AI for your business, Holly Wagner and Caitlin Gray offered other entrepreneurs some advice on how to incorporate AI into your business. Next slide. We continue to hold other events with our partners at the Chamber of Commerce and other businesses. One in particular was the Pacific Northwest Aerospace Alliance Networking Event that was held out at Evergreen this summer. We also had an Access to Capital event to help connect folks to funding resources for their businesses. Next slide. Lot of work behind the scenes. As you all know, it's duck on the water with the feet moving rapidly underneath. So we continue to move forward to connect our business community to the resources to help them be successful. Next slide. Our Investor Circle's super important to our work, and these are our businesses within our community that believe in our mission and support us with additional funding. Next slide. Some demographics, and I won't go through these. I want to get to some good stuff here. I want to run through quickly, we just last week had our McMenovation Awards, and want to give you a quick overview of those that, thank you to Councilor Payne, who joined us that morning, and share with you some of the awards that were given out that day. The awards were actually manufactured by the high school, which is very, very, very exciting. Heather Hadley-Blank worked with the Fabrication Department and the ESA program to make a very unique award for our awardees, our honorees. Next slide. Empower was our Maker of the Year. They're adding 200 jobs to our community and building 85,000 square foot addition onto their building on Booth Bend. Next slide. Startup of the Year was Phoenix Solutions. They have a helicopter-sized unmanned vehicle that was tested and part of the first cohort of the Center of Innovation Excellence through Business Oregon out at the Pendleton Airport. Very proud of their work and what they're doing. It has both a civil and defense application, could be used for firefighting, really exciting company, and we were proud to salute and represent them. Yeah. Next slide. Our Kelly McDonald Business Leader of the Year was given to Harold Washington, who's been a longtime humble servant of McMinnville. He serves on the McMinnville Industrial Promotions Board, and it was really great to give Harold an award. Next slide. Our workforce partner, again, the hospital, they're putting through about 20 interns through a rotation as part of the 8212 grant. Our Innovator of the Year was the newspaper, the news register, Jeb and Ossie Bladine, in a very difficult business where most communities are losing their community newspaper and source of information. McMinnville's proud to still have their operating newspaper, and that's because of the way that the news register is able to innovate. So MEDP board members wanted to recognize the news register and their work. Next slide. First-ever award for our Launch McMinnville, this is part of the Launch Mid Valley Program for entrepreneurs throughout the valley here. Hello Care participated in the 2020 boot camp and was the winner of that boot camp. They've had such immense growth over the four years they've been operating. They now have over 100 employees and are operating in several different communities around the region. Next slide. Outstanding Partner at Chmecota, they're there for everything, everything our community needs to support what we're doing. Next slide. And the Distinguished Service Economic Vitality Award was given to Ron Noble for his commitment. I think Heather put it best at the awards presentation, the seeds that he's planted with the funds that he was able to secure for McMinnville will show the community benefits for a very long time. So we recognize Ron for his service to the community. Next slide. And then we had a few more winners. These were not winners from MEDP, but we wanted to recognize. Blue Raven Pies received the Segcor Small Business of the Year Award at Segcor's Award Celebration. Next slide. Northwest UAV made it to the top eight of the coolest things made in Oregon competition, lost out to the Tillamook Ice Cream Boat, but next year, maybe they'll make it. Next slide. And then Mac Market, Diana and Todd celebrating their fifth anniversary. They were an awardee of the 2019 Startup of the Year of MEDP. Next slide. We've got some upcoming events, and that is it. Thank you for your support and the opportunity to be able to share this with you today.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you for a great presentation and all the wonderful work you do. Greatly appreciate it. Now move to public comment, comments from community members. Any interested audience member is invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on a topic other than a matter of litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, a matter scheduled for public hearing today or at some future date. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you wish to speak and you're on Zoom, please use the raise-your-hand feature to request to speak, and when your turn is up, we'll announce your name and unmute your mic. If you cannot find that function, then please send a chat directly to our city recorder, and we will announce you. When you provide public comment, please announce your name and the city you reside in for the record, and please remember to fill out a public comment card to be submitted to our city recorder prior to leaving the meeting today. Do we have anybody signed up in advance to provide public comment?
Yes. First, we'll start with Erin Lawler, who is on Zoom. She did provide two documents that I sent out to the council earlier this evening and will be made part of the public record on the amended packet.
Thank you very much. We are going to unmute your microphone, Erin, and as a reminder, please announce your name and the city you live in for the record, and there will be a timer on the screen so that you can monitor your own time. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you. Hi, guys. So my name is Erin Lawler. I'm in McMinnville, and I just wanted to show up today and speak on the off-leash dog topic, which I've learned is a hot topic. I kind of just dipped my toes into that just based on my own family and our personal experience. We've just been having a lot of increased run-in with off-leash dogs in our parks. So, for example, I have two little ones, and we go to our neighborhood parks all throughout the week, and we were just noticing that every time we show up, somebody has their dog off-leash running through the park, or they're showing up to let them off to play ball in areas that are clearly marked, no off-leash dogs. And so I started collecting public feedback on that, which is what was submitted to you guys, and I have 43 responses on that so far, and I would just really encourage everybody to look through those. I submit it in like a few different formats, because it can be kind of a lot to read, but those testimonies are really eye-opening as to what the citizens are experiencing with the off-leash dog issue. And I know there's many different facets of the issue, but the one I'm bringing up today is mostly in our parks. So the Jody Anser Park, where no dogs are allowed, has kind of turned into an unofficial dog park just because of lack of, lack of a presence of authority there. There's just really no accountability. And then Evergreen Park is the same. On any given day, you can show up, and it's kind of a free-for-all where trails are fun to run with your dogs, but it's clearly marked that there's no off-leash dogs allowed. And anytime my family has showed up there, even yesterday, we have run-ins with off-leash dogs that can just really quickly turn into a big safety issue, from what I've seen and personal experience. But I just, I don't know what the solution is, but I wanted to kind of broach this subject and start working towards a solution. One of my suggestions is trying to find something proactively so that we're not trying to respond or ask the city to respond on a case-by-case basis. It just doesn't seem like that's realistic. But I think that there is definitely a proactive way that we can be cleaning up the neighborhood and kind of encouraging people to police themselves, just with maybe messaging from the city of that we're going to be working on this or cracking down on this, or possibly more presence of enforcement officers so that people can see, oh, I actually have accountability in this area. But my three minutes is almost up. Really, again, I just wanted to share my testimony and share with you those testimonies that were submitted. I've also received 10 more just today, so I will follow up with that. But yeah, thank you, guys, for having me here.
Thank you. Thank you so much for providing public comment to the council this evening. Is anyone else signed up for public comment?
Yes. Next, we have Amanda Pawonka.
Thank you, Amanda, I believe, left. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment this evening?
That's everyone who's signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone either in council chambers or on Zoom that would like to provide public comment this evening? Thank you so much. We'll go to advice and information from councilors on committees and board assignments. I'm going to start with those at the dais, and if you don't mind, Councilor Peralta, will you start us again?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a brief report tonight on council governments. It doesn't really relate much to McMinnville, but the council government's Legislative Committee had staff from DEQ and Marion County present to us on redevelopment of the Saniam Canyon after the 2020 fires. Council governments in Marion County have been working to improve the sanitation and sewer in the Saniam, and Marion County will be petitioning the Department of Environmental Quality to amend the Three Basin Rule, which is a rule that restricts the kind of waste facilities that you can put in the Saniam and the three main rivers in that corridor so that the new publicly-owned treatment plant can operate. so that the new publicly-owned treatment plant can operate, and they can get rid of currently failing septic systems in the canyon. So that is going to happen, DEQ is going to hear that in late November, and we're optimistic that this rule will be amended to allow for this facility to operate. So it's going to take a lot of regional cooperation to happen, but that's what COG is working on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Payne.
I did not attend the last landscape review due to scheduling conflict, and Lip 6's bi-monthly meeting has been postponed from September to October 23rd.
Thank you, Councilor Menke.
YCAP, I'm particularly happy to report that YCAP has success in with CFO selections, recruiting a team. We have chosen a finance director who has started this week, and this is terrific since it's been quite a while since we've had a finance director. In regard to the ADP McMinnville, since the executive director is currently on leave, Jen Sharp, who is the construction project manager, hopefully is available to work at this point, and Laburn Pitts, Amber Hansen-Moore, and Ashley Parker, the Housing Initiatives Director, are the ones heading up this project. Since they did receive a final completion notice, what they represented is that it'll be 60 days from that time. The thought is that they will probably do some soft openings for the shelter, which was rather confusing in Newburgh, I'm hoping it goes better here. But they'll open it, you know, on a cold night for maybe a couple of nights or something like that, and then they will not be open after that. They're trying, testing it out with their personnel and stuff. You have to keep in mind that they were anticipating being in this shelter or being in this business sometime in May, and so they had staff, and then they've lost staff, and so they're staffing up again. It's a process. There's a grant agreement, and enrollment is underway for the Health Related Social Needs Grant from YCCO. We anticipate receiving these funds $491,240. In the next couple of months, YCAP has submitted all required elements of the Healthy Homes Grant Agreement as a waiting word from OHA as to the timeline for the distribution of funds. The Austin Family Foundation Grant, the amount of $75,000 was received in August to support the Newburgh Drop-In Center. And that's what I got.
Thank you, Councilor Chenoweth.
Thank you, Mayor. The, I'm not sure exactly what it's being called. Heather can fire it at me when I get done. But the pact to discuss the innovation campus has gotten underway. We had our first meeting, created, appointed a president, kind of went through some of the basic ideas and concepts of how we're going to work as a team, and I'm looking forward to rolling up my sleeves and getting that project underway. And that's all I've got for you.
Thank you, Councilor, who was nominated chair?
Um, you know?
Abigail Nealan.
Thank you.
I was always going to say it's from URAK, because that's all I could remember. Abigail.
Thank you very much, Councilor Gary.
Yes, thank you. Affordable Housing met since our last council meeting and had a good, long, meaty discussion on the housing production strategy. The Third Street Improvement Group will meet on the 14th of October, and on the agenda is the refined flexible design concept, as well as a stormwater and curbless design briefing on how those two work together as we look to that more flexible design concept, which would include curblessness. DEIAC meets Thursday, and then MURAC, its October 2nd meeting, was postponed to allow more focus on the selection process for Northwest Rubber Site. That's my update, thank you.
Thank you so much, Council President.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Fire District, we have Pancake Feed this Saturday from 7:00 to noon, so if you want to check out some new medic units, some new fire engines, or just get some good breakfast and mingle with the community, that's a great event to stop by, and also a great thing to head out to the pumpkin patch afterwards. Airport Commission, we have two commissioners with expiring terms at the end of the year, so applications are on the city website under the Boards and Committees. I believe is the tab that you click on, and then you get the application for all of our committees, and just check the Airport Commission box and submit your application. Nothing new on YCOM and nothing new on Visit McMinnville, but a hybrid for, it's on the, it's a, it's a, it's a meeting, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I clarify? Thank you for the invitation to the Pancake Feed, it's Sunday, not Saturday, Sunday, October 13th.
Thank you so much.
Sure, I was sorry about that.
Great, thank you. Um, let's see, we have a few updates as well. Was able to talk to Children's Institute and our Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir will be able to attend a Facilities Roundtable next week. It's a statewide roundtable on facility usage for childcare. Our Councilor Jessica Payne has been selected as our voting delegate at the League of Oregon Cities Conference, which I believe starts tomorrow, and thank you for, or the 17th, 17th through the 19th, and thank you very much for attending and for submitting your votes on behalf of the city in McMinnville. Also next week, we have our new federal lobbyist team this week coming out and touring and getting more familiar with our legislative priorities going forward. And then this past week, or also upcoming this Friday, we have a meet and greet with police chief candidates. And then this past week, I had the pleasure of attending two community events. One that I already mentioned was the Crown of Yamhill Valley, which was hosted by Henderson House, and had a really phenomenal judging panel. I wasn't on it, but had a really phenomenal judging panel, including our Community Development Director Heather Richards. And it was a fabulous evening, so I encourage you to attend next year. And I was also able to attend Grease, which was sold, essentially sold out every single night at Gallery Players, which I think is unusual for runs there. And it was a great show, top to bottom, sets, choreography, the acting, the singing. It was really, it was really, really wonderful. And then we also conducted developer interviews this week, as Council Gary mentioned, and so we met with the four development teams that are moving forward in the process with Northwest Rubber, and more information on that soon. And with that, let's go to our consent agenda. Does any counselor need to recuse himself or declare any potential conflict of interest or actual conflict of interest before we hear the consent agenda? Not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Still moved.
I have a motion from Councilor Menke, a second from Councilor Peralta. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, say nay, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Mayor, would you like to do department head reports?
Yes. I would love to do department head reports. Especially now that we have that consent agenda out of the way. I was worried that might hold us up, so wanted to be kind to everybody here in the room. City Manager Towery, could we start with you?
Hey, nothing to report tonight.
Oh, perfect. Mr. Lightenberg, City Attorney?
Nothing from the legal department, thank you.
Well, thank you. Community Development Director Richards?
Wouldn't that be funny, but actually I do have something. So next week is the State Planning Conference, the Oregon APA Conference. So on Thursday and Friday, the city's planning team will be there in full force, as well as many of our planning commissioners. So I'd love to see the planning commissioners taking advantage of that opportunity and participating in those discussions as well.
All right, fantastic.
Is the FEMA conversation part of that conference?
No, because actually, I don't think so, because I think the conference was put together before this emerged as a dialogue. But there is a bi-weekly, which I think is now turning into a weekly web, hosted meeting by LOC every week, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Parks and Recreation Director Susan Muir.
I will give you an update under the next resolution agenda item, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Public Works Director Jeffrey Hunsaker.
Nothing from Public Works tonight.
Thank you, City Recorder Claudia Sisneros.
Nothing either.
Great, that's all for department head reports. We will now go to our resolution for the evening. We are going to consider Resolution Number 2024-54, a resolution of the city of McMinnville, Oregon, declaring its intention to reimburse expenditures from proceeds of tax-exempt obligations. Parks and Rec Director Susan Muir, will you please inform us more?
Absolutely, Mayor. This, I'm going to start with an update from the last time you heard from us about this project, which was August 27th. I want to let you know what we've done since then, and that will be an introduction to the resolution. We have issued a request for proposals for financial services for this bond specifically. You heard from PFM, a consulting firm, at your August meeting, so we'll be grading and scoring those and awarding a contract. We have spent a lot of time updating iHeartMac.org and our project webpage, and I encourage everybody to go there. We have project background, we have the history of MAC PAC, the Community Advisory Group. We've linked the PROS plan on there. We've included the history of the locational conversations that we have and have had and all of the analysis related to that. We have a history of our recreation facilities and a timeline that tracks our population growth over the years with our facilities. We have a section for community feedback, and we've started a frequently asked questions section. We posted a few recent newspaper articles on there as well, and we'll continue to do that. And I'm just about to post some information and instructions about how people can go look up the information from the county assessors and do the calculation on their own property and figure out what that would actually mean to them in terms of the cost, which would be $2.52 per thousand of assessed value. So we're putting together some information related to that. We continue to do outreach. I was invited by the Friends of the Senior Center to their baked potato event today and talked to about 60 people and gave them information about the Culture Parks and Recreation Project. I'm going to be meeting with some stakeholder groups that typically would attend our programs like gymnastics and martial arts, and I'll be going to the senior fitness group at the pool in a couple of weeks. So we're getting around and continuing to spread the information about what we're talking about and what's in the proposal, and a little bit more about the timeline as well. Jenny Berg and I were invited to talk to a group of interested community citizens that are willing to talk about this project once the city decides, or if the city decides to put it on the ballot. We went and made a presentation to them, and we anticipate that they will continue to meet without us and move that forward. There's a lot of former MAC PAC members on that group, as well as additional new members to support the project. I want to point out that you're seeing a lot of articles, like I mentioned, and not all of those are from us. I want to just point out that Anna Barsati's viewpoint that she wrote was completely independent on her own, and she put that out there to support the project and us thinking about 20 years into the future for culture parks and recreation facilities. We're also working on, continuing to work on the purchase and sale agreement and title reports and an updated appraisal. And probably the biggest thing that we're working on is the operating budget and plan that we plan on bringing forward to you on November 12th. So that's the important part of this process, which is to understand what the ongoing costs of a project like this might look like for the city of McMinnville. Last time we were here in August, Councilor Garvin brought up the timing issue and asked us to look at speeding things up a little bit in order to get some good polling data to you by the end of the year. So we plan on fielding poll number two the week of November 11th, and we will be sending the council those results as soon as we get them. Because of the holidays, you may receive them before we have the opportunity to present them here. And then we're building out the January and February calendars in order to come back to you with the results of the poll and talk about a potential ballot measure. We're looking for grants and partnership opportunities. We are actively watching other communities that are moving forward with proposals like this, including Woodburn, which is on the November agenda for a similar type of facility or expansion to a facility. And then we're also nervously watching headlines that are coming around from around the state, such as the one recently that said another aquatic center faces temporary closure. The Osborne Aquatic Center, which is one that we toured with MAC PAC, noticed some rust on their roof and decided that they needed to do some structural investigations on it. The Lynnfield Pool also had a mechanical breakdown, and I'm happy to say our club welcomed them at our aquatic center on their time, and Lynnfield was able to partner and use our facility for a few days while they were getting theirs back up to speed. So a lot of information coming in. We're doing situational awareness for all of these things. And that leads me to tonight's resolution. So I want to call your attention to Sections 3 and 4 of the resolution. Those are on page 106 of your packet, and this really describes the reason why we're here now talking to you about this. Section 3 indicates that this resolution needs to be adopted no later than 60 days after the date on which the city pays its first expenditure. And then also Section 4 is the timeline at the end of the reimbursable timeframe that's outlined here. The reason why it's important to do now, we don't anticipate any real immediate capitalizable cost being spent. However, we want to get this in place so that if we keep moving forward and have some, we can get those paid for out of the bond proceeds. So this is, it could be looked at as a little mechanical, but it's important for us to get this in place now so that if we do pay any capitalizable cost between now and when we go to the market with the bonds, we can kind of claw those back and get those reimbursed. So that's what the resolution is in front of you today. If you decide not to put anything forward to the voters, this will not have any effect, and we don't need to worry about it. And we recommend that you approve it.
Great, thank you so much. And these wonderful, this is still in my pocket from this morning, these wonderful brochures you've made, where can people get this great information?
There happen to be many of them out in the back of the room here. We also have them at all of our facilities, the library, the community center, the aquatic center. iHeartMac.org is the best place if you just want to go look it up online. And we also have contact information on that webpage, so if anybody wants to follow up with me or Jenny Berg, we'd be happy to talk with people about this. Yep, happy to meet with people and talk.
Thank you. Do any counselors have questions? I see Council President does. I will tell you it's 7:57, so if we want to make any records tonight, just keep that in mind. Council President, your question, sir?
Yeah, thanks for the update, Susan. My question was around this resolution and that this resolution would only be used once it's actually voted and successfully voted in May? Or is there a chance that we could expend something between now and a yes vote?
It would only be used if we get a yes vote and ultimately can go get bonds. Right now, we have an ad package in your approved budget that we are using. We have not found any capitalizable costs as a result of that, so we could spend money, but it would not be reimbursed through the bond unless the bond passes. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, okay. And then second question is, how many years is the proposed bond going to be?
Yeah, it's a 20-year bond. The financial scenario is for 20 years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any additional questions from council? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-54. I have a motion from Councilor Gary and a second from Councilor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. I will now adjourn the council meeting at 7:59 PM.